Good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate everybody coming out to this Thursday, January twenty-third, Halloween thirtieth, Board of Commissioners meeting. We will eventually, in the next ten to fifteen minutes, have a quorum. So what we'll do, we'll go ahead and take roll call, and then we'll try and take care of some items that we can do that won't require any vote or anything, like getting summary reports out of the way and stuff like that, so that we can keep this meeting in a timely manner, so that you can get back in your offices and do what you gotta do. I know it's been extremely cold last week or two, and a lot of people've come down with some illnesses and viruses and stuff like that. So our attorney is with us on the phone, and so we'll go ahead and take roll call, please.
We're about to have a quorum, Ms. Leonard's coming in.
We do have a quorum. We'll go ahead.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Bart. Commissioner Obuchowski?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Jumbel?
Here.
Commissioner Salem?
Okay, thank you for being here. I think we'll start right with the approval for the agenda, need a motion and approval.
I saw move.
Second.
You properly moved the second roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jumbel?
Yes.
Okay, I already put the comments on agenda items only. Here he is now. We will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from December the twelfth, 2024.
I saw move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jumbel?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we need to have a... It might be a little discussion on this approval of the updated personnel plan before we go in, before I call for a motion and a second.
Yeah, we are asking the board to approve and update our personnel plan where we are attempting to allow exempt staff, so salary exempt staff, to work from home for sixteen hours a month. And so we're asking the board to approve that change to our personnel plan, and really the goal is to help improve work-life balance. We know our pay isn't the best, but we're just looking for ways that we can continue to support staff and make the Housing Authority a more desirable place to work.
That's a great idea.
Could you just elaborate just a little bit more further on that? I mean, I don't have any problems, I think it's a great idea too, but could you just maybe give us a little bit of your thought and insight into that?
Yeah, just, again, just looking for ways to help our team balance the workload. We know our salary non-exempt staff carry a huge chunk of the workload for the Housing Authority, and they're here way beyond hours that, you know, require a forty-hour work week, they work beyond that. And so when we're looking at, you know, our compensation, our overall compensation package, including our health insurance and everything like that, and we're just trying to find creative ways that may not include increases in salaries to be able to compensate our staff or make it just a better place to work.
Man, that's a great idea, because I was thinking with JB going up on that minimum wage, and then people flipping hamburgers, and then other people doing real extensive jobs, they feel like they're being knocked out, but with them giving incentives, that's a great idea. Hallelujah, friends!
This is new, or I felt some people work from home and wait until they go to an hour or four.
No, yeah, this is added, and so it's sixteen hours a month again, and so a staff member could choose to... We're asking that they plan it in advance, and so you could choose to, you know, say work on, if you know you're gonna work two Wednesdays from home in a month, you can do that, as long as we know ahead of time, and so just, you know, a way for us to kind of change, and hopefully, one day we can move toward, when our technology catches up, we might be able to move toward having our non-exempt staff go to a work-from-home model as well for a few days a week, but we've gotta let our technology catch up to that on the level we're there at.
Has there been any work-from-home policy up till now, or have people been in?
We had some, we had a work-from-home policy during COVID, but we did change it because, again, our technology really wasn't up to speed, and so we weren't able to really track and monitor what staff are doing when they're not at work, and so it became a little too complex for us to manage for our non-exempt staff, but again, for our exempt staff, we know, you know, pretty much what their workload consists of, and they're able to do a lot of it remotely if necessary.
How do you plan to... I don't wanna belabor this.
No, it's fine.
How do you plan to manage it, or who kinda like oversees this, how this process?
Each supervisor will, each supervisor will approve time, work-from-home requests, and so pretty much all of our directors, all of our directors are exempt, and so they will benefit from that. We have a handful of other staff members who are exempt, and so I wanna...
How many supervisors do we have?
We have like, I don't know, how many y'all is it? Everybody over there!
But just for information for all of the board, next month in February, if you just, you know, have it like that flow chart, you know, blah blah this, and then the line, and that, this is just good organizational, like organizational chart, the flow chart or whatever you wanna call it, so that we can have a visual of our operation.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Something like that, you know, Carl Hospital has been doing that for a while now, because the earth's back, and so, you know, people have been doing that a while, they've been like almost full-time at once.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at ways to try to, you know, maybe do more in the future, but again, gotta let our technology catch up.
Well, can I get a motion for approval one day?
Yes, you can, you get a second, maybe.
You're moving first.
I'm sorry, I'm so excited, I don't get it.
We're in a motion and a second.
It's a move.
All right, we have, we have our motion for approval, we have the second, so roll call.
Thank you, board. Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jumbel?
Yes.
Okay. We have approval for the Halloween thirtieth, January twenty, twenty-five operating budget.
And Miguel, can you come up and speak to the board about our operating budget?
I don't know, but I would suggest maybe if we...
They all have it in front of them, too.
No, but I mean, the sequence, because I tried to, I was gonna talk about real budget of December twenty-four, then the budget, and then, but I mean...
If you could just do the operating first, I mean, the operating budget first, and then we come back for financials later, you could do that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I need to go to the twenty twenty-five budget. Actually... Okay, so if you recall in our, in our last meeting, we talked a little bit about the budget for twenty twenty-five, but you were just briefly presented. Actually, this is a new, a new presentation of the budget structure, which was actually in our previous meeting, was actually seen for the first time. So you may recall that we had much more dense worksheets, numbers that are being a little too small, and basically, the budget had groups and subgroups. So basically, this is a summary at the level of the groups, so that's what makes it a little more, more dense. So this time, what's being presented is the twenty twenty-five budget, but in a way that it's comparing the twenty twenty-five budget to the actual figures that were actually what, the preliminary of twenty twenty-four showed. So looking at the comparison, we are anticipating that we should come up with an operating income for twenty twenty-five of two billion forty-four seven twenty-three. And basically, the main reason is that our property management blended components, we are, we're assuming some rent increases as compared to twenty twenty-four, so that's really what's making the difference. Towards the bottom, there's some explanations, a little too small, but I think you can see it, they're in front of you, but basically, that's what, that's what this is comparing, like I said, the twenty twenty-five budget with the preliminary twenty twenty-four actual. So this is the composition, and this was, as we actually seen the last time, this is the composition of the expenses of the budget, so percentage-wise, how much, how much of the total expenses are in each category, presented with that five chart. Finally, what I'm, what's showing there is the comparison between twenty twenty-four, like I said, preliminary actual, and the budget for twenty twenty-five, but it's more in the form of bars, so that it can be issued, appreciated. The last thing of the budget, which there was, actually, in the last meeting, none of this was seen, I don't know if you may recall that on our previous, on, I guess, towards the middle of the month, I decided that I was gonna treat the grants separate from the operations, because basically, it's a little, it's a little difficult to combine UCU with housing, I mean, numbers can be combined, but conceptually, the way the numbers are presented is actually a little different. What I'm showing there, the different groups, are the groups that both Department of Labor and Illinois Youth Coalition, which are the two most significant grants that UCU has present their reports. So I'm showing the budget in balance, because every, every expense that we currently is actually recovered. So this is, this is a projection of, the first column is UCU two thousand twenty-one grant, which will be ending sometime this year, and just the second column is twenty twenty-four grant. It's, it's not unusual, it's not unusual to have two Department of Labor grants running at the same time, so, but they are both properly distinguished, both in the budget and the actual expenses. The last column is the UCU, the Illinois Youth Coalition, which is, which is a grant that usually goes from August to August. We're actually on the third grant right now, and I'm trying to prioritize that as well, assuming the same diversity. So basically, that is the UCU budget.
How come the Resident Services for twenty twenty-five has took a dip? Under Resident Services?
Yes, well, basically, we have to, we have to see what is considered Resident Services. A lot of that is the supportive services, and I'm anticipating with the, with the budget that I work with, had a little decrease, because other, other parts of those Resident Services are basically activities for tennis, but in the scope of what that is the total, it's a little minor, but that's kind of like what I was observing as far as the tendencies.
And then, just to kind of expand a little bit on what Miguel has done here with the, with this budget, at the bottom of this page here, this one, there is category, definition category, the definitions of the categories, so you all can understand where the revenue comes from and what that, and where the expenses come from, and what they, what's included in those categories, and then in the orange section, it's, the revenue and expenses are explained, and so this is how he will present the budget on a monthly basis moving forward, so it's clearer for the board to understand, and a little more consolidated.
That blue kinda hurt.
It's hard to read. We'll try to make it bigger next month. We're on your tablet, so you could expand it a little bit, but yeah, we can make it bigger.
All right.
For me, I was gonna mention something before I started, I just, you know, got a little, I wasn't expecting to be here so soon, but I want to thank the board and the management for giving me the opportunity of being part of the Executive Director Education Program. I graduated in January, and I think that it's an very interesting program, I think professionally will be pretty useful, just to myself, but to the agency, and again, I wanna thank the trust and the support.
You know, really, our executive, I guess she is, man, you're doing is awesome, because she, I took a class in this. When you run an organization, because you know I got a master in training and development, when you run an organization, you gotta always cross-train people in your facility, because if something happens, she needs to shift people to another position without bringing another person in at that moment, or to keep some function going, and that is great that she does that, because a lot of people cannot do that. How do we get them to not cross-train, where they have people cross-train in their facility, where they have people can fit in, they have to wait and hire ticks along, this and that, and that stuff falls down, so it's great that she does that, because then she makes people aware of other jobs they can do, and then it makes them grow, and if you keep people growing, they love what they're doing, and they stay, and you don't get miserable. Hallelujah!
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Leonard, thank you, Miguel, appreciate it. So we need approval of that, Dr. Henry.
Okay.
Hey, Miguel, one more question, I see, you talked about the twenty twenty-five budget, you had it in actual from twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that's actually the other part, I don't know if you wanna see it.
Oh, you was gonna show it later or something?
Yeah, but I thought the sequence was gonna be to talk about budget for twenty twenty-four. I think I'll come back and, I'll answer that.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you for that discussion, and follow up on the budget for twenty, FY twenty-four to twenty, FY twenty-five comparison. I think you answered all my questions, it seemed like the rest of the board members entertained what concerns and questions they had too, so without further ado, I'd like to form motion for approval on this twenty twenty-five operating budget.
Second.
And properly moving, second roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jumbel?
Yes.
Okay. Moving ahead, we'll have approval for employee salary increase for twenty twenty-five, and we'll ask our Executive Director to enlighten us on that.
Okay, we are going to have to discuss it in closed session, so I think we'll have to come back after closed session and vote on it. Eric?
Yes, I'm sorry, was that closed session or closed session? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, the staff, salary increases.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, they can't vote in a closed session, so we'll come back after closed session.
Okay, so we'll just vote on that after, after closed session, so we can just move on.
Okay, we'll come back to that item after closed session. Okay, down to item six, Executive Officers' Report, Activities Report by Ms. White.
All right, well, first off, we wanna congratulate our Champion of the Month, Ms. Anita Plank. She didn't know, so she was just invited to the board meeting, so I asked your father to come up and say a few words about Anita.
I'm looking surprised, because Anita was one of my foster kids, guess what, Brad even though she was here.
Good afternoon, everybody. Cool thing about Ms. Anita is that yesterday, I said, I need you to come to the board meeting, and she looked at me and she said, why? And I said, because I asked you to. That was good enough for her to be here, so that kind of speaks to the, a lot of her charm and pecciness and need for herself. Anita is a great asset to our team, one of the components of our program is follow-up, and so per our grant requirements, all of our students that go through our program go through a year of follow-up, and in that follow-up, they're expected to get a place in either education, or employment, or apprenticeship, and so we're really struggling in that area. And since Anita has come to our program, she's helped with all of our alumni students, I believe she's got like seventeen out of nineteen contacts with those students, which is really, really good, and she's just made a big dent in that bubble that we were having a hard time trying to get down, so I'm ever thankful for having her on the team, she volunteers to do just about anything, all the outside moving around, going with the kid stuff, she's the first one on it, so I can go hide in the background somewhere, so that's pretty good, so we're happy to have Anita, and thanks for being a part of our team.
Would you like to say anything to Anita? Come on up.
Nice to see you. Well, thank you so much, I feel very honored, for sure, I've only been here for a couple months, so I'm excited to meet the rest of you, hopefully soon, but it's been an honor to be on the team, I've been in this area not, not for super long, I'm not from here, but I love our youth, so Youth Build, I'm very, very happy to be here, I had some other offers, really glad I took this position and opportunity, and my heart is just to serve our youth, they're our future leaders, they're our future communities, so it's fun here, so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Anita!
We have a wonderful thing for you.
One last thing, Anita, Anita is the kind of person that she can change a kid that somebody else can't change. You work with the difficult, and you make it happen, that's one thing I can say about you. Hallelujah!
All right, so congratulations again, Anita, we appreciate all the hard work that you do for Youth Build. Moving on, so, great news, we have officially closed Oscar Stier Place on December twentieth, and so everybody who was involved in that knows, went ahead and committed, so congratulations to staff on that one, for sure. So altogether, it's around the twenty-nine million dollar redevelopment of the project, and so we're excited, seventeen tenants so far have been moved within the building, and renovations have started on phase one, there'll be three phases, with the third phase being the largest, as twenty-four units will be renovated, so we'll keep the board updated as that comes along, though we're so excited that this project finally closed and that we're, we're in the construction phase now.
I drove by Stier Place just a couple days ago, and I saw the scaffolds are all up and working, so that's, that's a lot of good progress, and wheels are in motion, so that's a wonderful thing.
Yes, and then, kind of as Miguel mentioned, you saw my thunder, Miguel. On January fourth, the fourth through the ninth, we all attended the Board of Commissioners Conference in, where were we at, Miami? Yeah, Miami, and so during that conference, both Jennifer and Miguel both graduated with their certification from Rutgers for the Executive Director Education Program, so I wanted to send a congratulations to them, and I'm very proud of them both, and they worked really hard, and I know it was a long, a long time to be away for, for all the conferences, but they worked really hard, and they both completed their certifications, so I'm excited for them.
That was a good conference.
It was a good conference.
Very memorable.
Our HACC, FSS programs, our shift program, received a major increase in funding, so that increase jumped from one fifteen to three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and so that's annually, and we'll be able to hire a few more coordinators to keep that shift program going, and I just wanted to send a shout-out to Stephanie, because she was like, we're not paying a grant writer, I'm gonna do it myself, and so she's not paying me. So shout-out to Stephanie for that. So we did get that increase, so that's really good to see, so congratulations to the team on that. Also, really exciting news, Congress did approve an extension to the Move to Work Program, so we officially received our letter saying that we, our MTW demonstration has been extended until twenty thirty-eight, so that's really big news, because it was a big topic of conversation, whether or not they're gonna continue MTW, and our industry groups, and the leaders of our industry groups work really hard advocating with Congress and HUD to make sure that we got that extension, and so all of the original thirty-nine agencies were extended until twenty thirty-eight. Supportive Service summaries, twenty families received assistance, eighteen received security deposits, one received furniture assistance, one received application fee assistance, and the total spent for the month of December was twenty-three thousand. Our shift program also hosted a celebration for all of the graduates that we've had from the shift program since, for this year, and so that was really nice, that happened in December. Our LSS team also hosted an adopt a family event, where we adopted some families and purchased Christmas gifts for them, and so that was beautiful, also nine families were adopted and twenty-seven children were served. We hosted a few senior events, some holiday bingo, and that was fun, and then we also hosted our all-staff holiday meeting on December eighteenth, and so this was a really fun event that we had, we had some educational games, and I think all the staff enjoyed, we had a good time, and we learned a lot, so that was nice. And then, for the Youth Build info, so again, I think we went over this last month, but we had eighteen males, fourteen females in the program, the average age is nineteen, twenty-nine African-American, three Hispanic, tenth grade is the average grade completed, thirty-two have been low-income for twenty twenty-four, we've had one foster youth, two youth offenders, and then the zip codes of the service have are on that as well. the surge have are on that as well. And then, we have our student success story. His story is, is here on the paper, but I asked DJ to come to, to the, um, uh, board meeting to talk about, uh, his time with Youth Build, but also, he has been interning with Justin, um, and I know he's really enjoying his experience. And so, as it's coming to an end, and we're looking at getting him placed in some other areas, I wanted DJ to just come up and, and share a little bit, a little bit about his time at Youth Build, and then also his, uh, internship.
First off, I'm a little nervous. First off, I do want to start by thanking, um, thanking, like, um, people that, like, put me in this position to do it, because first of all, I wouldn't be anywhere, like, I wouldn't be where I'm standing at, but, um, like, one thing that I can say, like, um, Youth Build helped me, helped me a lot in my life, like, my life just changed around, like, a lot, and like, within a whole life year, like, I was, like, in a bad state, but that's only going to get too deep into it. But, um, I just really want to thank, 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 thank the people that believed in me, and like, just really want to, want to say, like, um, I only know this, like, I look at something like, I'll get what y'all heard on me. I'm hurt, but I'm sorry.
Okay, don't be nervous, DJ.
I'm gonna eat, but, I'm gonna make it hurt, but, like, um, like, so, I'm gonna just probably go on my internship, like, from when I started, so like, then like, getting Youth Build, like, um, like, the property that we did, like, um, like, to really get connected with Youth Build and stuff like that, and, like, it, 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 it make me feel good to, like, like, knowing that I came, like, that I was in a position that, like, they were in, it's like, like, I can learn from them, and they learn from me as well, so it's just like, it, it is really, like, it'd be, it'd be a wholesome moment, and it'd be like, I just want to keep doing it, it's like, it make me feel good about myself, like, I don't know, like, I just want to keep going though, but, well, I just really want to, like, appreciate too, Ms. Lily, like, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Me, like, Mr. Dopey, like, remember definitely, Mr. Dustin, like, everybody, I just really want to thank you, because I wouldn't be nowhere, like, I wouldn't be right here without you, so, is that enough?
Thank you very much for your, for your response and your testimony. And I want you to know that you have a wonderful group of people around you, and, you know, we support you, and all the other students that are in the program, and we are one big, happy family, and we want to try and keep it that way. But, most importantly, uh, you're part of this organization, and you represent, represented yourself very well, and I know, uh, the people love you for that, and what you, what you said, and, and you got a lot of support.
So, he's really, he's really grateful, having you not be grateful, he's just blessed. And you're blessed for the stuff you're doing with his kids, and Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. We're blessed to have great staff, great, a great team of people.
That keeps out here, God, walking in the dark. Hallelujah.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna skip past this slide right here, because we went over that, that two, um, and that. What are you doing, girl? It's her, it's her fault. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on the embarrassment, you're not gonna let me catch this one. Um, but, uh, they did host an alumni social, which was, that, which had a great turnout in December, um, and so, all of, uh, the cohort, the previous cohort, they came back, and we were able to collect some data, which we need to do for the grant, but also, kind of just socialize with them, catch up with them, see what they're up to, and so, that was a really fun event that we hosted then. Um, and then, for construction week, they worked on electrical wiring, so I, I actually got to come in and see that they were, like, hooking up light switches and stuff, it was really cool. Um, and then, on the next slide, they had their Youth Build holiday party, so we were able to celebrate with the kids. And then, that's all for my update, um, and now Miguel. You can come back up.
You didn't say one word just before.
Yes.
It's really gratifying to pick up your, your monthly report, and, uh, all the graphics that are illustrated, and all the pictures, and it's really easy to, to read and digest, and I just want to commend the team that pushed this report together. I mean, it's really, really important, and, uh, I've been on a lot of different boards and done a lot of different things in my career, and this is exceptional.
Thank you, Dr. Henry.
Is this, uh, these pictures of this, the new place where they're?
Yes. Mhm. Yeah, that's our, our, um, Pioneer Street.
I was also about to say something too, real quick, and it's quick and short. It's good to have a testimony from a young man, because that lets you know your work is standing in name. And so, keep doing what you're doing, because somebody, somewhere, you're touching somebody. It's not always about the money, it's always something about somewhere, someone down the line that you put you into their lives, and they, I agree with him, that he really appreciates and is grateful for what he has learned here at Youth Build, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, this is the preliminary, uh, December twenty-fifth, the real versus budget. Uh, like, uh, remember, I have a similar question as for the one in fifteen, our last year, because, uh, when you asked me about the, the actual, not the one, the actual, uh, I had, uh, November, somehow, the slide wasn't there. But, uh, but this is December. Uh, we, uh, we accountants always try to, uh, the word preliminary, because actually, although it's already, it's, it's always the preliminary. But, that's, that's like the first closing of the year, uh, and we actually, this is the summarized version, again, of, uh, of the spreadsheets we were using before. As far as revenue, uh, we had, uh, we had more revenue than, than was budgeted, that, uh, twenty-three million dollars, uh, compared to the twenty-two, three, twenty-four on the budget side. Actually, we had, uh, we had a little more, uh, than that, but there were some, uh, some deposits that came directly from HUD for specific purposes, uh, because, as, you know, there was quite a bit of, we, we, uh, purchases of properties, and, uh, like, also, to like the purchase of the interest in several square. So, that I, uh, actually, uh, prefer to exclude to make it more comparable. Uh, as far as the, the expenses, we were, uh, a little over, uh, over the expenses, but overall, we actually, uh, ended up with, with a positive recovery. Uh, that's, that's, uh, like I said to you before, uh, here is what I was mentioning, graphically, that difference from what was the, the actual income and, uh, the budget income, like I said, we had more, more income that was, that was budgeted. Uh, here, the, this is the, uh, this is what I mentioned about the profit, which, it were a little larger, because it looks, uh, visually, like, the difference would be a little higher, but, uh, actually, like I said, the increase in revenue compensated additional expenses. I would say we, we're growing, so that's, that's a fact that, uh, we're going to incur in more expenses. These are the, the blended components, which is really our, uh, our property management operation, and I, I, I prefer usually to, uh, to talk about the blended components, because these are the ones that, uh, that we have full control over. Uh, you can see that, uh, there was actually, uh, positive net operating, net operating income, uh, at the end of twenty-twenty-four. And graphically, uh, you can see on the next chart, uh, what was the, uh, the actual income in blue, and what was the, the budgeted income in, in orange, to show what, uh, kind of, kind of so that we can observe what are the, uh, the different properties in which some of our cash flow is a little better. Maple Grove, looks a little weird, it's Maple Grove Manor, uh, because when, when the, when the budget was done for, uh, twenty-twenty-four, uh, it was done from September again, you know, to know that, uh, Maple Grove Manor is going under remodeling, so those are should be more, uh, and you could pretty much the same type of comparison, uh, from the expenses that were, uh, budgeted and the actual expenses. That's pretty much it. The next one's the budget, which we talked about earlier.
Thank you, Miguel.
Thank you. Okay, there's no questions on that, and I entertain a motion for approval of the financial reports.
Second.
Broca, please.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none. Uh, before we get ready for the closed session, I would just like to thank our commissioners, Commissioner Rebecca, Commissioner Karen Boyd, Commissioner, uh, McFarland, uh, for coming out this evening, and it's something that we, we do every month, and, uh, but, uh, you made this quorum today for this very important meeting, and I know commissioners also get taxed, uh, a lot of different ways, but they, they make it, and they, they, uh, and I'm happy that they're here today, and I'd just like to give a shout-out to the three of you that are here, and for you to work in your diligence, because that, this, this is a board that, that, uh, we rely on one another's expertise and understanding of certain things that may come up. Not everybody has an answer, we don't all know everything, so that's why I asked some of the questions I do, just for clarity, and, uh, you really, you really make this board a very operational and successful board, and I just wanted to let you know that, I really appreciate it very much. So, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, entertain a motion to close before we move into closed session. Do we adjourn this meeting?
Mhm.
Have a motion to adjourn.
We need closed session for A and D.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
Eric, it should be to enter into closed session, correct?
Correct. Or, and did you organize the, uh, personnel and then, what else was there?
Uh, it's A and D.
Okay, A and D. So, we need a motion for that, do you organize closed session to discuss, uh, personnel of A and D, um, real property, act, purchase or sale of property.
So good.
Okay. All right.
Chairman Henry.
Okay, yes, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
And I just, I just need to go get one document before we start, and then I'll be right back.
Couple minutes pause. Here, we have convened at, uh, at four thirty-two PM to, to make, to make a motion to approve staff, uh, increases.
So good.
Second.
Then properly moving, second roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
And I just wanted to note that that increase was up to four percent.
Okay. Hearing no other business, at forty, four thirty-three PM, I, uh, make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Uh, do we have to give permission for the sale or?
No.
Nope.
Do you need to address anything regarding, maybe, uh, employee raises or anything like that?
We, yeah, we just did.
Okay, can I give it a hard so?
Yeah, it's okay. Okay. So, need a, a motion, and then?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. I motion to adjourn it.
Properly moving, seven, seven, for chairman, roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner, or Turnbull.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye.